Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of June 10th, 2024. Recommendations to the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on June 18th, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. And I always mention that 10:30 a.m.'s approximate time reviewing planning items. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. If you are an agent or the applicant, you do not need a speaker request form. Roll call. We have Kevin B., and that certainly has been noted. And then Jim had previously noted too. Both of them are basically approved type of situation. Approval of minutes of May 28, 2024 is the next item on the agenda. Have you all received your packets and reviewed those minutes? If you have, the Chair will accept a motion to approve.
I move we approve the minutes of May 28, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the minutes from the May 28, 2024 meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. And since you picked up your agenda packet, you certainly have had an opportunity to review today's agenda. Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda.
To move.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda for the Planning Commission, Pennington County Planning Commission of June 10th, 2024. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We're going to work on the approval of the consent calendar. We get Brittany today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number four is conditional use permit review, C U R 0807, for Marilyn Welch, to review a single wide manufactured home as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends to end conditional use permit review, C U R 0807, as the use is no longer needed. Item number five is conditional use permit review, C U R 1419, from Mark and Norma Bruin, to review an accessory structure prior to a primary structure in an agriculture district. And staff recommends to continue conditional use permit review, C U R 1419, to the July 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, to allow staff time to contact the new owners. Item number six is conditional use permit review, C U R 1430, for Sherri Farley, to review a single wide manufactured home to be used as a caregiver's residence in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, C U R 1430, with conditions. Item number seven is conditional use permit review, C U R 1628, for Chase and Leslie Larson, to review a recreational resort in an agriculture district. And staff recommends to end conditional use permit review, C U R 1628, as a property owner obtained approval of a planned unit development overlay, P U 2120. Item number eight is conditional use permit review, C U R 1705, for Delmar and Melissa Nelson, to review a vacation home rental in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, C U R 1705, with conditions. Item number nine is conditional use permit review, C U R 2318, for West River Electric Association, to review an electrical substation in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, C U R 2318, with conditions. Item number 10 is conditional use permit review, C U R 2321, for Trinity Trust, to review living in an existing garage shop building while remodeling an existing single-family residence in a suburban residential district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use permit review, C U R 2321, with conditions. And finally, item 11 is planned unit development overlay review, P U R 2120, for Chase and Leslie Larson, to review a planned unit development overlay to allow a specialty resort in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of conditional use, or excuse me, planned unit development overlay review, P U R 2120, with conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Does the staff have any item they would care to have pulled?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. Commission, any item that you've reviewed that you would like pulled? Anyone in the audience here to speak on an item that's there that they want to make sure that they address before they leave? All right. Chair would address a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent calendar, as listed, it'd be item number four through 11. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried onto item number 12.
Commissioners, Christine Phillip, Assistant Planner. Agenda item number 12, conditional use permit, C O C U 24-0016, to allow an accessory dwelling unit to be located in a detached garage on the subject property. The applicant owners are Tom and Michelle Skog. The size of the property is 10.73 acres, and there's no flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. And Pennington County Planning and Zoning, Section 324, lists seven criteria that must be met to allow an accessory dwelling unit. These are displayed on the slide. In the interdepartmental review, the two requests from onsite water treatment system and the addressing have been addressed in the conditions of approval. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, C O C U 24-0016, with conditions.
Questions for Christine? And you're standing, oh no, this one is yours, number 12. Okay, I got lost for a second, sorry. Any questions for Christine?
So this has a separate driveway from Klondike, correct? I was looking at the picture, trying to figure out exactly what it was.
From Klondike, yes.
Is that the dots coming in?
Up to six dots.
Yep. All right. Because that's all I saw, and that's why I wondered.
I have a question. Under interdepartmental review, it says no septic information could be found.
They will be actually upgrading the septic system, because they're going to be doing some remodeling on the home also.
Okay.
To meet the condition that you've got. Okay. That was my question. Any other question for Christine? Anyone here in the audience that would like to, is the applicant here? Chair would address a motion.
I move we approve C O C U 24-0016, with conditions.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, C O C U 24-0016, with 14 conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried onto item number 13. Good morning, Kelsey.
Good morning, Kelsey Roush, Planning. Bear with me, I still have a cold, so I can't really talk. Item 13 is a special consideration to Trailwood Village Planning and Development. They would like to reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to eight feet to allow further construction of a detached garage. The applicant is Daryl Hopkins. The property is 0.22 acres, so it's a very small acre property, and it's on a corner lot, so they actually have two frontages and one rear. Trailwood Village is, this is basically a variance, but there's some issues with how to word it, so that's why we call it a special consideration. I do, we, staff does recommend approval of this, so they can just build a garage. There are existing, here's the property. He did already put the concrete in for the garage. I told him he, he was allowed to do concrete, but if it doesn't go through, he won't be able to build the garage, so he kind of took that on himself. And then, I didn't, let's see. There was no concerns from the interdepartmental review, and then this would only be for this specific garage. If they wanted to build anything else in that area, further down the, down the property line, they would have to come back and get another one of these. So if you have any questions, let me know.
My, my concern, of course, is they've already poured the slab, which is a nice-looking slab. We ran into this, I don't know how many meetings ago, and it took two meetings to get through the thing. We had the neighbors get involved and everything. It doesn't seem like the right thing to do. And I know what you're saying, and I'm not sure what the other members of the commission think, but it's spelled out what it's supposed to be, and things are close, and this would be completely against what they've said. So in my way of thinking, I'm not real cool with this.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Kelsey, I assume that the neighbors have been informed, and the neighbors are okay with that.
Yeah, we haven't heard it from any of the neighbors that I know of. I mean, I was out home last week, so.
I agree with Mike, but the neighbors are on board, you know, I can.
There are several other lots in this area that have garages in the backyard as well. The majority of the time, all of our zoning districts, residential zoning districts, allow detached accessory structures to be eight feet from the property line. This is the only planned unit development that requires 25 feet for all structures. So that's why we recommended approval. It's not attached to the house.
Hey, Jill, go ahead. Somebody else have?
Well, yeah. So in this development, are there more that are within eight feet?
Sorry, let's see that.
In this particular development, are there more garages or buildings within eight feet?
Yes. Straight across the, across the road from him, there is actually a garage that is up to eight feet to the property line. It looks like they might even have a shed that's probably illegal, next to that detached garage. But there are other areas, there's, I mean, out in this area, people put sheds up without permits all the time in this setback. We don't go after them unless we get complaints, so. He was very, his, he and his contractor were very confused as to why they had to come and do this. But there's, in this area, there's, in Trailwood Village, there's a lot of garages in the back, so.
So that makes a big difference.
You know what the dimensions of that lot is? Can't be very, like 60 feet across or something like that.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's pretty small.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Was the concrete poured before, have they applied for a building permit?
No. So he, he came in to apply for the building permit, was told about this whole situation. He's been in multiple times confused as to why he has to do this. His contractors called me, they asked if, because they had time, his contractor had time to do it. I said, technically, you can build, you can pour concrete. If you don't get approval, you, I mean, you can pour concrete, not over his whole yard, but you can have a concrete parking pad, and you wouldn't need a permit from us. So I told him it's kind of up to him. If he doesn't get approval, then he just has to use it as a parking pad, so.
Just, just to clear this up, and I could see where they would be confused. As a contractor, that's considered site work, and site work is separate from building, is where the confusion would have happened. Concrete, even in the city, is, you know, it's questionable whether you, you've got to do it. If you, he could have wanted the concrete so he could put a, you know, a tent out there for the kids so they wouldn't have bugs. Following, they, they kind, you have a certain amount of flexibility on the use of your property and pour concrete here or there. Patios, we allow in the county. If you put a roof over it, then it becomes building, that sort of thing. So just to help in his homeowner's defense, you can put concrete.
So could it be a pickleball court?
Excuse me?
Could it be a pickleball court?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Just checking.
You might get on TV, too.
He is here if you have questions for him, too.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this request.
Here's your second.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, C O P U 24-0005, with four conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
Did you get that, Jerry? Onto item 14.
Cool, second for our planner. Item 14 is vacation plat, C O V P L 24-0005. It's to vacate plat notes 7, 8, 9, 13, and 14 for Lot 3, Block 3 of Mountain Mountain Subdivision. The landowner is Dean and Allison Maltese. Location is the northwest, northwest of the intersection of Eliza Court and Eleanor Drive. Along Eleanor Drive involves 4.55 acres. Current zoning is planned in development. Existing land use is vacant. Access is off Eleanor Drive, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. So the Planning Commission has seen this several times before. The Mountain Mountain Subdivision has put notes on their plat to meet our subdivision regulations. In order to build on the property, you have to meet these or vacate these notes off the plat. So this was rather an interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. Again, six of the properties have applied for this, and they've had note 7, 9, 13, and 14 vacated. And the applicants have applied for the subdivision regulation variance, which will be heard at the June 18th, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. The request that vacate, to vacate note 8 was denied on previous requests, so staff added that into the condition. So with that, staff does recommend approval of vacation of plat, C O V P L 24-005, with conditions.
Thank you, Cody. Questions for Cody?
Mr. Chair. Cody, how many of these have we approved now since?
Six.
Yeah. So that's getting to be standard operating procedure for this particular subdivision. And I think the commission realized that you don't, in the future, it just makes it more confusing when you put those notes on a plat. And I think we're going to go a different direction relative to that, so. I just couldn't remember how many, but it seems like they're coming every other month. We get in the request to do the same thing.
Yep, it's six, and I believe there's five left after this.
Five left, did you say?
To vacate notes on the plat and.
Thank you, Cody. That wasn't going to be my question.
Can you explain what note number eight refers to?
So note number eight refers to requiring an advanced treatment unit, so it's an additional septic tank. Back when the subdivision was created, they're over the Madison Aquifer. So there was just environmental concerns, so the agreement back then was to add the A T U unit or advanced treatment unit for the septic system. That hasn't been vacated on any other requests, so staff's just staying with what the board.
So staff prefer that stayed in place?
Correct, yes.
I remember this, too. There are some recharge capabilities in that general area. They're not the only development that's got some of the recharge on it, if I remember historically.
Correct, there's, there's some other subdivisions that require.
Correct. Any other questions for Cody? Your applicant here?
They are, yes.
Would they like to speak? All right, you certainly don't have to. All right. Any other questions for Cody? Chair, would we address a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the vacation of plat, C O V P L 24-0005.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, C O V P L 24-0005, with two conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried onto item number 15. Good morning.
Good morning. Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item number 15 is lot line adjustment plat, C O L A P L 24-0002, and is to adjust lot lines to create tract 36A R and tract 38R. The applicant is Shumbluzen, Carl Jukler, and the other landowner is Sylvia Madder. This is located off of Hermosa Court at the end of Rushmore Ranch Road. The current zoning is a planned unit development. Both these lots are vacant, and there's no special flood hazard area on this, on these As stated, the applicant is requesting to adjust lot lines to create two lots. No road improvements are needed as it's within a road district, and it appears that the roads meet Ordinance 14 standards. And staff has found no issues or concerns with this request. That's, it's not changing density, it is only adjusting lot lines. So staff recommends approval of the new lot line adjustment plat with two conditions.
Thank you, Megan. Questions for Megan?
So the easements to get into both of these are both on these turnarounds?
Yes, so those are right-of-way. These don't have easements for access because they're both connected.
Yeah, I didn't say the right thing, but that's how they're getting in.
Yes.
There's enough room there, okay.
Yep.
Any additional questions for Megan? Anyone here in the audience want to come forward and speak on this? Okay, Chair, address a motion.
I move we approve C O L A P L 24-0002, with conditions.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, per staff's recommendation, C O L A P L 24-0002, with two conditions. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Onto item number 16. We just got everybody today from the staff down there, didn't we? Thank you. Nice to see you again, Brittany.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Item number 16 is conditional use permit review, C O C U 24-0013, for Jeff Devaney. It's to allow a tattoo shop in a highway service district, and this was continued from the May 28th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. The property is located at 23855 Highway 385. It is a commercial property. You can see the photos here. The reason for the conditional use permit is because it is a tattoo shop, and it does require some additional inspections. There is special flood hazard area on the property. They did get a flood plain development permit for the building when they originally constructed it. So when staff looks at conditional use permits, we look at seven criteria. The answers are up on the screen. Staff didn't find any significant issues with this conditional use permit in a highway service district. The applicant was looking to expand his existing tattoo business that he has in Rapid City and open a second location near Hill City. This location will operate with six tattoo stations and one piercing station. Tattoo orders will rent for daily or long-term use. The hours of operation will be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 11:00 to 8:00, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Sunday from noon till 6:00. The layout of the business will consist of tattoo stations, a piercing station, a waiting area, reception area, restroom, auto clave cleaning station, and a storage area. I do have that up there. This was rather drawn from the interdepartmental review. There was no objections or concerns received. We did perform a site visit on May 16th. The existing commercial structure has three units, two of which are currently occupied. One is the tattoo business. It's taking over an existing vacant space. There's sufficient parking for the area. The nature of the tattoo business is compatible with other existing businesses on the site and in the area. The county ordinance officer performed an inspection on the 16th and found it met the inspection requirements, and no items of concern were identified during the inspection. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit, C O C U 24-0013, with conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
So Brittany, on Milliron, those lots that the gentleman's trying to get rezoned, so that he can do a car lot or whatever, is this property going to be impacted when we do this rezone that you're saying could happen in September?
If they.
Or we're going to combine highway service and commercial?
It would still require a conditional use permit because of the tattoo establishment, and any highway service or commercial would require a C U P.
So are there a lot of businesses that require a special use permit?
It depends. If there's the ATV rentals and the tattoo businesses are two off the top of my head, that no. The differences between highway service and commercial, if it's more appropriate in commercial, it can't be a C U P in highway service, but because a tattoo establishment is not permitted use in any district, it's a C U P.
So do you need to have a special use permit for a tattoo parlor in Rapid City, do you know?
I do not know what Rapid City requires.
And I think this where this gentleman got a little confused, just thinking that it was retail, and, and didn't realize that it was a particular building or the business that required a conditional use permit.
So just some history on tattoo establishments in Pennington County. Originally, our ordinance enforcement did all the inspections on tattoo establishments, even in the city limits, and this went on for at least 15 years, if not more. Our state's attorney's office did take a look at the statutes for tattoo establishments and found that we did not have the authority to do these inspections outside or inside city limits. We could only do them outside city limits. And it was actually a recommendation from the state's attorney's office that all tattoo establishments be a C U P in the county. So the city, previously, we did the inspections for the city. I'm not sure what the city does at this time. To my knowledge, they do not do anything.
So there is a special use permit required for the ATV rental on that property, too?
Correct.
And I think when we agreed to do that with conditions, they were not supposed to park those on the grass, if I recall.
I'm not aware of that one, I think another staff member.
Because we did the same thing down the road. Required that they park those on gravel because of the contaminants that they have, oil, antifreeze, fuel. So you might check into that, because I think last year they put them all on gravel, and now they're back on the grass. I just don't think that's a healthy environment, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Brittany, can I weigh in? I think you are correct. I was trying to review, we basically extended that one year to give that gentleman a time to locate a piece of property that might be more suitable, and it was over concerns about the trailer, moving the trailer around as this, the sales office and the service office. But I do, I believe you are correct that we spoke about the parking had to be in conjunction with the parking that was rated for the.
Well, the t-shirt shop's no longer there. That was the restroom facility.
Yeah.
So.
Good point.
Okay.
So this facility does not need a significant number of parking. They do have adequate parking, and their onsite wastewater treatment system is oversized for the types of uses that are in there, even with the C U P for the ATV sales, and they did build a small coffee shop that they will have as well. So their onsite system was sized for a restaurant, so it's very large, so it's good. And they did their operating permits as they required. They did come in and get all of their building permits, so this property is in compliance with your partners.
And just for transparency, you and I spoke about the signs, and you're going to look at those down the road, because we have one unit still open on the location. And then, and I brought up as to whether, how we should be looking, they are now renting the signs that are on the, the deal a little differently than was originally planned in the deal. I think one of them is tied together, so it's all one, and which exceeds the off premises. It didn't exceed it at the time, sorry. It exceeds what we want to do now on off premises type signs. But if that's one permit, then if there's two on the other side, we've got to look at that. And I wanted to be transparent, so you know that I was also in the office questioning about that. And we are, at this point, everything's fine.
Correct. They have two signed permits for the building, they have two signs on the building. When that third business gets in, I know that they are working. When that third business gets in, I know that they are working on the interior. I'm not aware of what that business will be, but when they do, they will need a signed permit for that third.
I looked at one goofy thing. Which one's the twelve by twenty? I see the one is smaller than the other. Is it not twelve by twenty or what?
It can be smaller, it just can't be larger.
Yeah, I just wondered which one was twelve by twenty.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a note of interest, there was a really good article maybe a month or two months ago on the tattoo powder that's in there now. And so they, I don't know. I told Jeff I didn't want to bring that here because the city of Hill City, you know, definitely supports this particular business.
Yep.
So he passed his inspection. He had worked with our ordinance enforcement officer previously when he had his location in the city and worked with our ordinance enforcement officer. So his facility met all of the requirements of the checklist and had no deficiencies. So.
Any other questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve conditional use permit, C O C U twenty-four dash zero zero one three.
Second. Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation, C O C U two-four dash zero zero one three with ten conditions. Discussion. There's no one left in our audience but Jason from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now we're on to item, the floating number. We don't need, all right, so it'd be seventeen.
So item number seventeen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero six for Pennington County to amend section nine hundred A road improvements and design standards. To amend and supersede the existing section nine A road improvements and design standards of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. And it was to update this section for clarification of the applicability of road districts. The way that the existing text read was confusing. So as far as when it was applicable to a road district, so we did just clean up that language in the proposed text. So it actually read, if the district or township does not regulate road improvements or have design standards and does not levy taxes, we actually separated that sentence into two separate sentences. So it read, if the district regulates road improvements or has design standards and the road district or township must be established and levy taxes. So it was just a clarification.
Questions for Brittany? I've got one. What if they don't levy taxes since I'm on?
So if they don't levy taxes and they don't have standards, then it falls back to our subdivision regulations. This came about for a subdivision regulation variance in a road district. And the road district was active and had a different, wanted a different requirement. So it caused some confusion, so this will clarify it. So they have to levy taxes, and they have to be active, and they have to have standards. If they do not, then it falls back to the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, because some of the road districts don't have standards, too, because
And they don't levy taxes.
The land that the road's on was, what's the thirty, twenty-year or thirty-year? It's always been used. It was never dedicated in the original plating.
So it just gets confusing on when ordinance fourteen applies and when road district standards apply, so this is meant to clarify that.
I think they used to use twenty-five feet then. They allowed for that rather than the ordinance fourteen standards. The commissioners did. When they looked at the plattings, they just left twenty-five feet for access that was there.
And townships actually in statute are allowed to go to twenty feet.
Are they? I knew they were using something to go by on those old ones, because some of them have no standards for the road.
Correct. But townships do have a standard in statute of twenty feet, but they can be stricter. So they could have twenty-four if they choose.
Any other questions for Brittany? Hearing none, Chair, address a motion.
I move we approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero six.
Second. Moved in second to approve OA two-four dash zero six per staff's recommendation. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. And OA two-four dash zero seven.
So item eighteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero seven for Pennington County to amend section fifteen hundred C sewer facilities. To amend and supersede the existing section fifteen hundred C sewer facilities of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. This is just to update this section to reference the current section of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Originally, that onsite wastewater treatment system information was under two oh four J. We did create a new section, which was three thirty-one, so this is just to reference the correct section. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero seven.
Questions for Brittany? Hearing none, Chair, would address a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash oh seven.
Your second. Moved in second to approve OA two-four dash zero seven. Discussion. The only discussion I can think is certainly to update the section number and get the, get it to be what it is. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. On to item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero eight for Pennington County to amend section seventeen zero three dash H for certificates for plaits, minor plaits, and lot line adjustment plaits. To amend and supersede the existing section seventeen zero three dash H certificates for plaits, minor plaits, and lot line adjustment plaits of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. This was to simplify the certificate for road districts and add a certificate for roads that cross federal lands. If you look at the proposed text under the street authority certificate, we worked with some of the surveyors, and there was some confusion, and there were some instances where there wasn't an applicable certificate. So we worked with them to update this for them. In addition, there are some roads that actually access, are accessed through federal lands, and we didn't have a certificate for that. So we did add that under number three for access through federal lands. So staff is recommending approval of ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero eight.
Questions for Brittany? My question would be number three on the proposed text. Is that where you then attach the letter where the folks go get access approval from the, from the district?
Correct. So typically, there is a number that's associated with it, so they can find it. So they just have to reference that number, that they have a special use permit that's associated with that number at the time that the plat was created. Because right now, there is no reference to that, and it's, so it would be nice to actually have it to show that they have legal access.
My only question would be, well, what if they don't have it and they're applying for a new, and some of those take a long time?
Then it'd be difficult to get their plat done without it. They would have to find other easements or other access. Yes.
Because I knew the one up, and I already took three years to return.
It could already be a motorized vehicle trail that the Forest Service corrected, allows them to. They would just have to identify that.
And the other, will that create, so in other words, the Mylar couldn't get filed until they got it done?
Correct. And that is typical for any access.
Yeah, that's true. You understand what I was talking about? I'm sure we've run into them as the commission from time to time where one of the conditions that we are reviewing says they have to have that letter from the feds, which is correct, and we have to. But this, this specific one now would hold up the filing of the Mylar until it literally can be noted on the.
Correct. Well, in all other instances for access to lands on a plat, it does require some kind of street authority approval. So currently, right now, there's no, you know, requirement. And to get a signature from a federal agency would be difficult outside of what these permitted or one of the numbered roads that has motorized access. We don't run across it a lot. Most of the people that go through this do already have their special use permits through the federal agencies.
Oh, that I was thinking was, I was thinking some of those up by Silver City and that stuff we looked at. If it's out of state person, they, they, they're interested in building a lot at first or getting use their normal property rights, so to speak. So this, and I agree with you, I don't think it'd come up very often, but when it did, it could be a stymie, a really stymie year wanting to move forward.
It wouldn't prevent them from like having access or utilizing their property, even to get a building permit, they would have to provide that information as part of their building permit process. Because they have to show legal access anyway. This would be part of the plating process. So in order to subdivide, because sometimes the Forest Service may only allow in their special use permit access to one residential unit or two residential units, so our plat would have to match that.
And we did accept one by a letter from the district, didn't we, that didn't have it assigned, but it was already being processed here now, within the last year, I think I remember it or so.
Yeah, and it just says, or another identifier of approval. So if there's an email, a letter, or something like that.
Somebody had a temporary one that said it was already sitting on somebody's desk in Washington or whatever. Okay, so there is a way out to help the folks along that would own a property.
Right, and that's why we put other identifier of approval, so that they would have some mechanism to move forward.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, and we sure address a motion for approval.
If we approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero eight.
Second.
Moved in second to approve ordinance amendment two-four dash zero eight per staff's recommendation. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. On to item number twenty. Oh, we don't need it. Twenty-one.
The county board report, the board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission meeting.
Questions for Brittany on item twenty on the board? No one's left in the public. We'll count you as public, too, Jim. All right, items from the staff, building permit report.
Just the building permit report. We are up for single-family residences for May from last year in May. We are down a little bit for the overall number of permits in May from twenty twenty-three. However, our twenty twenty-four year-to-date is at or above what we had for twenty twenty-three.
Everybody have a chance to look at it? Useful report. Thank you. Items from the membership. You and I have discussed one.
Charlie and I talked about something. When, when we got all the information on our packet, it had to do with the changing of ordinances. Well, my first thought was, here's a whole ordinance. It's, you know, oh my goodness. Sometimes we get a complete ordinance and we're asked to vote on it. You know, we get it, for example, on Thursday or Friday, and we're asked to vote on it on Monday. On those big things, it would sure be nice if we had the extra week in between so we could phone in and talk to somebody. You know, I've tried phoning in on Monday early, and a lot of times you can't get a hold of anybody, and you're kind of flying blind, especially on the big things like that. So anyhow, I just mentioned it, that sometimes it would be, you know, a courtesy to us if we had the extra week in between on a thing like that, so.
And I'll weigh in and say that the only way where you could do that was pass a resolution that you, your department would be forwarding on to the commissioners to allow us to do that, so that we could have two weeks to pass an ordinance amendment instead of passing it at the next meeting. Only because it's really true. Some, sometimes I have some questions, and I try to get here early to ask them, but we don't have an opportunity to review or get directed, I guess would be a better term. Brittany?
So typically, on some of those larger ones, we will have a couple larger ones where it's a whole section. If we do send them out to you or the commission early, we do try to post them online at the same time, so the public has it at the same time as the commission. I would say that that would have to be something that's considered, so you guys don't have it before the public has the opportunity as well. So it would be at the same time. The V H R ordinance is an example that that one was out for the public while in advance. We have a couple other larger ones that are going to be in front of you. Specific, probably, our floodplain ordinance, which will be a significant endeavor, so it's not something that you guys will get on Thursday and have, be expected to vote on it on Monday. It'll be probably at least a month or two in some public comment and public meetings ahead of time. And then we have the mining section as well that will be similar.
So we would treat that as a continuation?
Or it is just something that we would put under items from the staff. We would let the commission know that this is coming forward, put it out to the public, probably put it as a sidebar on our thing, do some kind of notice to the public as well for these larger ones, because some of these larger ones will take a significant amount of time and public input to give them the opportunity that they need and deserve.
That would help.
Mr. Chair.
Go right ahead.
Brittany, on your permits issued with fees and values, can you go to page five of seven? I just got a couple of questions.
On which one?
Five of seven. Let's just go up to residential garages, carports. It says C O B P twenty-four oh two one six. Some of these don't have any values. I just wondered what's.
It's on page five of seven?
Five of seven. So is this a removal, or what am I looking at? This particular one would be two-three-zero-six-six Thunderhead Falls Road. But they have value.
Oh, those are actually five, they're under five forty-six removal of non-residential buildings.
Oh, there's no fee for removal?
Nope. We do not require fees.
Oh, well, what do you see going on with mobile homes? You see that getting to be a trend where folks are buying mobile homes or taking them off or?
Last year, we saw a significant number of the removals. We do have with the HUD requirements, right now, a lot of those are grandfathered. So on some of the CUPs that you see that were ending, it's because those CUPs are not needed anymore because they meet the HUD requirements. The ones that do not meet the HUD requirements, we maintain the CUPs just so they maintain that property right, so they can continue to have their mobile homes. It goes back and forth. There's three, there's mobile manufactured, mobile and manufactured home and modular. So there's three different, so, but they all fall under that one oh four.
So when's the last time that somebody permitted a mobile home park within the county?
A mobile home park? It's been a while. Most of the ones that we have permitted or had CUPs for were existing ones that were grandfathered that they expanded the use. But as far as a brand-new one.
No, I just, something like that would go over good, you know, affordable housing.
There have been some, you know, talks with some developers about possibly doing some, but there hasn't been an application for one. The last one I can remember, I believe, was up on Dias Road, and that was probably in two thousand seven or two thousand eight, I believe, is the last one. That was a brand-new one, and that did not pass because of the infrastructure requirements.
Thank you. Okay, I've got one more. I'm back on mics. So that we as members aren't throwing a monkey wrench into your gear's progress. I still don't totally understand how you're seeing that more or larger ordinances. I'm not sure that larger makes, we could change key things on anything. I'm not sure we still shouldn't have some direction somewhere along the line so somebody can get some direction over a weekend. In other words, you might see an ordinance or your department sees an ordinance amendment as a normal pass-through item, and then here's another group that are, you don't see as a normal pass-through item, it's a major review. Follow me? Somebody might feel that, I'm thinking changing fees, for instance, can be just, you're only changing dollar signs and amounts. Somebody might have a large objection to that, and what goes into the fee, where it goes, this sort of thing. That's one of the smaller ones I can think of. But you don't feel we should look at, so that we give some time between the public and the commission to get a chance to get your direction on the thing?
Right. Well, it's difficult. I mean, we could do some type of things, and we could bring it forward under items from staff, but we do have advertising requirements. So that's where it kind of gets, you know, if you guys get it too far ahead and it's advertised.
And you end up publishing it while you spend an additional money.
Or the public doesn't have it for as long as the commission does, so we have to keep it, you know, at that same level. You guys always have a right to continue it for more information. I mean, or ask to have it re-advertised, ask to have a special meeting. I mean, or ask to have it readvertised, ask to have a special meeting, that's always available to you if you feel that.
How do you, does your department draft one? In other words, is there a number of people sit down, you're legal, you and the assistant director and the people that, maybe you assign them out to be written or looked at?
Typically, they come about because there's some confusion, like the one with the certificates that was brought up by a surveyor and a consulting firm that, you know, we'd worked with them and it'd become an issue over and over and over, so it was something that needed to be fixed because it was a continued issue. So we worked with them, typically we'll make those changes. We have staff meetings every Wednesday, so we go through them together, all of us as staff, and the staff meetings have legal look at them and then we have them advertised, those smaller ones like that. Like as far as our floodplain ordinance, that one is going to have to be updated just because there are some federal changes. And we are working with emergency management on some of those things because of they're updating their mitigation plan right now, so there's a lot of moving parts with some of these things before, you know, it gets, it's not like arbitrary where we're like, oh, we just need to change this ordinance. It's usually because there's either an issue or a demand or there's something that we're seeing in our office from the public as far as a want or a need and it's not fitting anywhere and it becomes a repetitive issue. So that's typically how they come about. It's not just one or two of us sit around and say, oh, we think this needs to be changed.
You got me convinced. Is there a way that the commission can look at something before the week that you decide to publish it or the time you decide to publish it? In other words, a meeting before or something that it's included, proposed under an agenda item or is there something like that? Would that gum up your works?
Well, I don't know how that would work because of our advertising requirements and the public notice.
Oh, because the advertising requirements for the agenda?
So the public has, have to have the opportunity to see it for the same amount of time as the commission. That's kind of how we've looked at it, like we would-
Wow, that's a quagmire.
Yeah, unless we, you know, bring up under items from staff on the ones that we're working on, then that way it's in a public forum and we're letting them know that these are the items that we're working on, maybe post it.
Now, you'd end up having to publish them separately, wouldn't you? Besides the fact that it'd be published in here as non-vinyl raft.
The only other option would be to have our, change our advertising requirements and deadlines so that you guys get packets at a different time.
I don't see that happening.
But that would be-
Okay.
But I have a question to clarify. So you advertise for our next meeting and we decide to continue it for one more meeting, you don't have to readvertise that?
No.
Okay.
Not unless there's substantive changes, then we would require it to be advertised again with all of those changes, so the public has ample time to, to look at those changes before it goes to the board.
So Charlie, if we came to that point, we could continue it then, yeah.
Yeah, we just hesitate doing that.
Yeah, but we don't have to readvertise-
But if it's something that's necessary-
That's the control factor, I guess, so that we don't goof up your, your system.
But if it's something that's necessary, I mean, we typically kind of expect possibly two meetings with the planning commission, so that's not out of the norm of what we figure anyway, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Last item I have from items from the membership, we got interviews tomorrow for our vacancy. Jim, of course, is, is getting off and two excellent candidates tomorrow. So just wanted to let you know, if you have any questions about either one, just let me know, I do sit in. Brittany, Jason's sitting in on this, Holly sits in, I can't remember who.
Commissioner.
Commissioner LeCroy sits in, so any of those folks, you can ask questions after the interview, whatever. We do go through a kind of a process after we interview the people, we, we speak about it together. Anything else from items from the membership? Hearing none, motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Sorry.
Moved in second to adjourn. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you.